Seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "O Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We would move into the adoption of previous council meeting minutes. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm moving the minutes of City Council Meeting held November third, two thousand and fourteen, be adopted.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Don't see anybody ringing in, so those must be in order, and I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well, and that would take us into our regular agenda. We have, it looks like, no delegations tonight. Everybody must be enjoying the unseasonably mild winter evening, so we'll go through delegations. We do ensure that this opportunity exists at every regular city council meeting, so any member of the public that wanted to come forward certainly could. At any regular council meeting, we always have this time. But since there's nobody here to address council tonight, we'll move on. We have no public hearings tonight, no unfinished business, so that'll take us right into reports and item eight point one, the Westgate Area Structure Plan Amendment. And our Community Growth Director will speak to that. Ms. Caddish Sharp?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. The first item of three is in regards to the Westgate Area Structure Plan Amendment. Administration is recommending that first reading be given to Bylaw C dash eleven eight six dash one, being an amendment to the Westgate Area Structure Plan, and that Monday, December fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at six thirty P M. at City Council Chambers be established as the date, time, and location for the public hearing. In regards to this documentation, the location is west of one hundred and sixteenth Street and south of one hundred and fourth Avenue in the Westgate West area. And the proposed amendments to the Westgate Area Structure Plan and the Westgate West O P. would allow the future commercial development to have a right-in, right-out access at one hundred and sixteenth Street. The proposed change to the Westgate West would be, will be brought forward for council consideration at the same time as a public hearing for the proposed Westgate A S P. Amendment. And the Municipal Government Act requires council to hold a public hearing before considering an amendment to an area structure plan, and advertising of that public hearing will be undertaken as required under the Act.
Thanks very much. Ms. Caddish Sharp, can I have a motion for first reading? Counselor Rice?
I move first reading of Bylaw C eleven eighty-six dash one, an amendment to the Westgate Area Structure Plan.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. First reading, no discussion or debate on that. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Rice?
I move that Monday, December fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at six thirty P M. at City Council Chambers be established as the date, time, and location for the public hearing.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion as to date, time, and location? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well, and would take us to item eight point two, a land use bylaw amendment, the one everybody's been waiting for, C twelve sixty dash twenty, to add new microbrewery and brewery definitions to the land use bylaw. Ms. Caddish Sharp?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Administration is recommending that Bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash twenty, being an amendment to the land use bylaw, be given first reading, and that Monday, December fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at six thirty P M. in City Council Chambers be established as the date, time, and location for the public hearing. The city has received a land use bylaw amendment application to allow a microbrewery within the city, and in order to accommodate this proposal, administration considers that the following two definitions would need to be added to the land use bylaw, that being microbrewery and brewery. These new land uses would be added as a permitted and/or discretionary use to the appropriate land use district. The M G. A. requires City Council, again, to hold a public hearing prior to giving second reading to any bylaw that proposes to amend the land use bylaw, and advertising will also be completed in accordance with the requirements under the Act.
Okay. Thanks very much, Ms. Caddish Sharp. Counselor Thiessen?
Hey, Mayor Bill. I move that Bylaw C twelve sixty dash twenty, being an amendment to the land use bylaw, be given first reading.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. So, again, no discussion or debate on first reading. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Thiessen?
I also move that Monday, December fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at six thirty P M. in City Council Chambers be established as the date, time, and location for the event.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Any discussion as to date, time, and location as proposed? I don't see anybody ringing in, so, again, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and our last of our reports, Ms. Caddish Sharp, eight point three.
Thank you again, Mayor Given. Administration is recommending that first reading be given to Bylaw C dash twelve sixty dash twenty-one, which would rezone from urban reserve to general industrial district, being an amendment to the land use bylaw, and that Monday, December fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at six thirty P M. in City Council Chambers be established as the date, time, and location for that public hearing. As background, a land use bylaw amendment has been submitted to the city. The proposed amendment would see changing the zoning from urban reserve district U R. to general industrial district I G. And the subject parcel is located south of ninety-seventh Avenue and east of one hundred and twentieth Street in the Center West Business Park. And the rezoning would be required to allow for industrial and commercial development. Again, the M G. A. requires City Council to hold a public hearing prior to giving second reading to any bylaw that proposes to amend the land use bylaw, and advertising will also be completed in accordance with the requirements under the Act.
Thanks very much. I'll look for motions arising. Motion for first reading, Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that first reading be given to Bylaw C twelve sixty dash twenty-one, rezone from U R. to I G., being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on, sorry, excuse me, first reading, of course? No discussion or debate on that. I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Reverend?
I would move that, further, that to Monday, December fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at six thirty P M. in City Council Chambers be established as the time, date, time, and location for the public hearing.
Thanks very much, Counselor Reverend. That was the one that I was looking for. Any discussion as to date, time, and location proposed? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Thank you, Council. That motion carries, and I believe that handles all of our reports and takes us right into our committee business. Counselor Rice, do you want to do the minutes from your hundredth anniversary committee meeting?
I'd move that council receive the minutes of the hundredth anniversary committee meeting of October twenty-eighth.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does everything look like it's in order? Okay. Thank you, Council. Then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Rice, anything you want to highlight from the meeting?
I do. I just remind council that November twenty-first, Friday evening, is the Spirit of Light, and council has been asked to serve hot chocolate and take part in that event. November twenty-fifth, at six o'clock, at the Teresa Sergeant Hall is the next park naming ceremony. December second, at the Teresa Sergeant Hall is the final parks naming ceremony. There are, remind everybody that the history book makes an excellent Christmas gift, and it's available at City Hall, the museum, and at Center Two Thousand. The Downtown Association's Memory Lane booklet, that initiative has been nominated for a Best in the West Award through the Western Canada B I. A. Association. And I think that's about it.
Thanks very much for the update, Counselor Rice, and look forward to getting those last few parks named. We'll move on to nine point two, the Community Growth Committee, from November fourth. Counselor O'Toole, is that yours?
Yes, it is. Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I have the, there's a small little error in the Community Growth Minutes. There was a deletion, and I just want to make sure everybody's aware that we had a in-camera item, and after that, we continued the meeting, and Bud Country had a, how would I put it now? We accepted the report for the Bud Country concern of holding back money for events, and I just wanted to make sure that was mentioned. So with that being said, I would like council to receive the minutes of the Community Growth Meeting held November fourth, two thousand and fourteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole, for that catch. Well, sure, we get the minutes amended?
They were acknowledged in the meeting, but they just weren't put on the report.
That's great. Any discussion or debate about the adoption of that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, anything you want to highlight from the meeting?
We just had one resident that had some concerns, and as far as council committee was concerned, administration was going to look after that with the appropriate committee, actually, department. And we had company come forward with a request to put a telecommunications tower in place, and we held it over till tomorrow, actually, tomorrow morning. With that, that's my report, sir.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. We've moved to nine point three, then, the Community Living Committee, and Counselor Radburn, I think that one was yours.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held November fourth, two thousand and fourteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on, sorry, excuse me, first reading, of course? No discussion or debate on that. I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Reverend?
I would move that, further, that to Monday, December fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, at six thirty P M. in City Council Chambers be established as the time, date, time, and location for the public hearing.
Thanks very much, Counselor Reverend. That was the one that I was looking for. Any discussion as to date, time, and location proposed? Again, seeing nobody ringing in, I will call for the vote. Thank you, council. That motion carries, and I believe that handles all of our reports and takes us right into our committee business. Counselor Rice, do you want to do the minutes from your hundredth anniversary committee meeting?
I'd move that council receive the minutes of the hundredth anniversary committee meeting of October twenty-eighth.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does everything look like it's in order? Okay. Thank you, council. Then I will call for the vote. Thank you, council. That motion carries, and I believe that handles all of our reports and takes us right into our committee business. Counselor Rice, do you want to do the minutes from your hundredth anniversary committee meeting?
I'd move that council receive the minutes of the hundredth anniversary committee meeting of October twenty-eighth.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does everything look like it's in order? Okay. Thank you, council. Then I will call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Rice, anything you want to highlight from the meeting?
I do. I just remind council that November twenty-first, Friday evening, is the Spirit of Light, and council has been asked to serve hot chocolate and take part in that event. November twenty-fifth, at six o'clock, at the Teresa Sergeant Hall is the next park naming ceremony. December second, at the Teresa Sergeant Hall is the final parks naming ceremony. There are, remind everybody that the history book makes an excellent Christmas gift, and it's available at City Hall, the museum, and at Center Two Thousand. The Downtown Association's Memory Lane booklet, that initiative has been nominated for a Best in the West Award through the Western Canada B I. A. Association. And I think that's about it.
Thanks very much for the update, Counselor Rice, and look forward to getting those last few parks named. We'll move on to nine point two, the Community Growth Committee, from November fourth. Counselor O'Toole, is that yours?
Yes, it is. Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I have the, there's a small little error in the Community Growth Minutes. There was a deletion, and I just want to make sure everybody's aware that we had a in-camera item, and after that, we continued the meeting, and Bud Country had a, how would I put it now? We accepted the report for the Bud Country concern of holding back money for events, and I just wanted to make sure that was mentioned. So with that being said, I would like council to receive the minutes of the Community Growth Meeting held November fourth, two thousand and fourteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole, for that catch. Well, sure, we get the minutes amended?
They were acknowledged in the meeting, but they just weren't put on the report.
That's great. Any discussion or debate about the adoption of that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor O'Toole, anything you want to highlight from the meeting?
We just had one resident that had some concerns, and as far as council committee was concerned, administration was going to look after that with the appropriate committee, actually, department. And we had company come forward with a request to put a telecommunications tower in place, and we held it over till tomorrow, actually, tomorrow morning. With that, that's my report, sir.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. We've moved to nine point three, then, the Community Living Committee, and Counselor Radburn, I think that one was yours.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'd move council receive the minutes of the Community Living Committee meeting held November fourth, two thousand and fourteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Again, seeing nobody in the queue, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Reverend, I think you had one piece of business?
Yes, thank you. I would move that council approve updated policy two zero one, recreation fees and charges as per attachment A. effective January first, two thousand and fifteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. This policy, basically, has been updated by increasing annually the fees, three percent, except for the Aquatics and Wellness Membership, which is tied into a drop in rate increases of twenty-five cents per year, meaning the membership, I guess, rates go up slightly under three percent, two point six nine to two point nine four, in respect of years. Now, and men did do a survey in mid-two thousand and fourteen and ask comparable facilities what kind of increases they were looking at, and they said three to five percent. So our administration brought forth the recommendation is generally three percent with certain a little bit less than that.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Again, seeing Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will not be supporting this, not because, of course, I don't want some of it to be raised for fees. Just by looking at when the first-term council, when East Link Center opened up, or at that time, it was called a multiplex, it was twelve hundred and sixty dollars for a family membership, and in one, two, three, four, five, six, seven years, this is done, it'd be fifteen hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And I believe we were starting to get a little higher and may add the three percent, but now I might be starting to get out of line a bit. I won't be supporting it.
Thanks, Counselor McLean. Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. A question for administration. Could you let us know, I believe Gary said at the last meeting that he was going to let us know at this council meeting what the subsidy would be required if we didn't increase the fees?
Do we have an acting governor to be able to answer that?
So, what Gary's passed on is that you're wanting to know what the subsidy would be required, and this would be compounded, so I can give it you in two thousand and fifteen rates. So it'd be one hundred and eighty thousand dollars additional for East Link Center, ten thousand additional for Day Bar, twenty-three thousand additional for Coca-Cola Center, and ten thousand additional subsidy for Revolution Place. And that would compound at a rate of approximately three percent compounding over the next four years.
Okay. Counselor Tarrant?
Thank you. That's the information.
Thank you. Counselor Rice?
What?
I think, I think those, that's how much additional funds the city would have to subsidize through the tax base if the user fees weren't increased as proposed.
If the user fees weren't?
Were not, if, if council chose not to support the user fee increases that are here, then we would require those amounts extra from property taxes to make the operations better. Counselor Tarrant?
Yeah. So just to clarify, it was about two hundred and fifty thousand, I think, roughly, was the total? Two hundred and, just less than that? Yeah. Anyway, so just over two hundred thousand dollars would be required. We'd have to add that into our operating budget as an additional subsidy each year for the next four years if we don't increase the fees. And speaking to the fees, I was supportive at the council meeting. I know it's, it's, you know, a tough pill to swallow, and no one likes to increase the fees, but I think we've made a number of other changes. We have the Low Income Recreation Access Grant for low-income families in the city, and we've increased that amount to three hundred dollars, if, you know, it's pretty, presented at the operating budget this week. So I think that does help low-income families there, and, you know, there's a cost of doing business, and I think that this is, you know, the fees are, the increases are in line with others, and just covers the cost of inflation.
Thanks, Counselor Tarrant. And, of course, you know, sort of technically speaking, this is really part of our budget process, because this sets the operating revenue from user fees, as has been sort of noted. So this is the one bit of that budget business that we do sort of outside of the budget meetings. And this is obviously the chance for the city to try and balance user pay, which is something that people talk about a lot of times, well, the users should pay for that with the general good in the community that these types of facilities have. So what we're doing is suggesting that the users can probably manage a little bit more. That means that the general taxpayer that may not use these facilities doesn't have to pick up that cost. Counselor Rice?
Did we advise user groups, and did we do any sort of public notification that the fees would be raised?
Ms. Haney?
At our annual ICE users' meeting, we do discuss the fees as part of the process, and we have all of the users come forward. I wouldn't think that that would have been the case for East Link Center. I couldn't speak for them, but I know for the ICE users, that is generally a part, is one of the items, and a three percent increase was what we anticipated they would be seeing.
Thanks, Ms. Haney. Any further questions or discussion? Don't see anybody else in the queue, so I'm going to call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Reverend, anything else you want to highlight from that meeting? You'll have to turn your mic on.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Highlighted three other agenda items. The Piranha Swim Club came asking for some G I. K. because they have been selected to host two provincial championships, one master's championship and one B. provincials, and so that report will be coming back to committee. And that was a good news story in terms of the province recognizing our facilities and our wherewithal to host such events. Also, we received a report from facilities relative to a request to support, further support the playground at Decoy Armories. We chose, committee chose to receive that for information and not refer additional funding to the budget process. And finally, we received a report with respect to mental, regional mental health services and their, their range of services and their capacity, and this report will be used by council in advocacy efforts as we move forward.
Thank you. Thanks very much, Counselor Reverend. Counselor Rice?
The Swan Even School Parent Association advised that they had excess funds from a previous project that they'd like to utilize at the Decoy Armories. So if you receive it for information, like what happens there, is that telling them we don't want their money? Is that?
Counsel Harp?
Well, I would assume that men would get back and discuss. I know Mick had been talking to the principal of the school. I'm assuming that he would, as a matter of course, talk to Mr. Haveland, the Swan Even Association president, to discuss kind of where to go from there.
Okay. So you, the committee doesn't have to direct administration to do that?
We didn't. We assume that would be the course of action.
It happens to assume.
Yeah. I mean, it was not an easy decision, but there is a park at Lions Park, there's a new other one at Swan Even. Their, their school demographic is changing to be one to four, and there are seven other...
I'm concerned about the city putting money, and I'm concerned that we...
Yes, but they needed...
...do a proper appreciation for their gesture.
Absolutely, and I think administration needs to do that, absolutely.
Thanks, Counselor Radburn and Counselor Rice. I think we have one last committee set of minutes, and Counselor Logan, that was yours.
Thank you. I would move that council receive the minutes of the Corporate Services Committee meeting held November tenth, two thousand and fourteen.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Does it look like everything is in place? Again, I don't see anybody ringing in on the keypad, so I will call for the vote. One more council that I'm waiting for? Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Logan, anything to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yes, just, there was no items coming forward for council approval from that meeting, but it would be of interest that was at this committee meeting that we received the update on the East Link Center that was of great interest to the community, and that's, so all of that information is public now, and action's being taken to address those items.
Thanks very much, Counselor Logan. I think that handles all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence, no delegations, no notices of motion. We do have some council member reports, and we'll start with the A U. M. A. and Counselor Rice.
Thank you, Your Worship. I attended meetings with Minister Con, MacIver, Oberly, and Clemchuck. With Minister Oberly, we stressed how frustrated we were with the Street Lake Project not proceeding more speedily, that the cost savings to just Grand Prairie alone is, would be enormous, and so he was going to talk to Minister Fawcett and put his support behind it. Minister Clemchuck, we stressed that an increase in funding to F. C. S. S. in two thousand and seventeen is not acceptable. We need it now in the two thousand and fifteen budget that, all over Alberta, this is, this is just really, really a dire need. I attended a meeting, the next meeting, in the Municipal Government Act review process, and it is actually moving forward, and it's moving forward much more quickly. And, in fact, they're scheduling another meeting two weeks from the last one, so they are actually wanting to move ahead on that meeting scheduled with Minister Johnson, Dennis, and the Minister of Education. And I attended an information session on the Alberta Environmental Monitoring, Evaluation, and Reporting Agency, A M. I. R. A., and this is an arms-length provincial organization that's responsible for measuring, assessing, and informing the public on the condition of Alberta's environment, and it is chaired by Dr. Lauren Taylor, who is, of course, a previous minister of environment for the Alberta government. I attended the federal gas tax agreement signing with the Honorable Rona Ambrose, Jason Kenny, and the Honorable Diana McQueen, Alberta's Minister of Municipal Affairs. That was very exciting. There's two hundred and eight million dollars this year has been made available for local projects. Since this, this fund's inception in two thousand and six, the gas tax has been extended, doubled, indexed, and made permanent. But I think the most exciting part to me was it has been enshrined so that municipalities can count on that money, and it is a ten-year agreement now, so that's, that's really good news. The other really good news that I think is really is exciting is it puts the decision-making in the hands of each municipality to use their money how they see fit. It's not like the, the government is sitting on your shoulders saying, yeah, let us think about whether or not you can do that. So I think, you know, in two thousand and thirteen, you know, you saw Waste Management Facility, Stormwater Infrastructure Rehabilitation, and Nature Center, wastewater, again, Tower Reservoir. So it, it follows the whole gamut of everything, and will certainly, I did ask them when we can expect the money to begin flowing. I said, when can we expect to hear from you that the check's in the mail? She said they would begin work on it immediately, so we should get the check fairly soon, and I think they talked to Mr. Anderson as to how much we're going to get. So that was an exciting, exciting time.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Thanks for taking those concerns forward on behalf of all municipalities. Counselor Thiessen, you said that you did have some, you've been doing a little bit of work, you said, for Mighty Peace Watershed lately.
Well, thank you, Mayor Bill. I haven't been doing an extremely lot of amount of work, and travel as well with the watershed. We've been doing our public consultations throughout the Northern Peace area. I've been as far as Grand Cash and Peace River, all in all, to present on behalf of the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance. Five stops in total for this counselor, but we did have some great turnouts, especially in Grand Prairie. I think we filled the Musca C. P. meeting room there that we had, filled with many people from the county and county council as well, as city planners and other people from the Wapiti Corridor Planning Society as well. So it was a very engaged crowd. Probably the most engaged crowds was when we went to the smaller rural municipalities like Fairview and Valley View. A lot of concerned farmers on the issue of fracking and what it's doing to their groundwater supply, so they're really pushing us, and I think we gathered a couple more volunteers to sit on steering committees and help us work out our integrated watershed management plan, which is what we were also moving forward after we put out our terms of reference from the state of the watershed. So it was an excellent, excellent time. I'm kind of glad it's over, because it was going on right through budget. So I was out of town two days, out of our two-day budget, so each evening I was out of town there, but that's all done. I'm glad to have done it and glad to have been a part of it, and looking forward to more work and more potential community involvement from around the Northern Peace area for the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. And I think that'll take us to council member roundtable, and why don't we start with Counselor Logan?
Much, just two items that I'll mention. The first is attendance on Remembrance Day and the somber and sober atmosphere that there, that there was, given the events that have happened down in our nation's capital and in the Middle East, and very meaningful celebrations this year, and I think there roundtable, and why don't we start with Council Logan?
Much, just two items that I'll mention, the first is attendance on Remembrance Day and the somber and sober atmosphere that there that there was, given the events that have happened down in our nation's capital and in the Middle East, and very meaningful celebrations this year, and I think there was a lot of people very moved by it. The second thing that I wanted to mention was the capital budget that we reviewed last year, I've participated, I think, in my career in nineteen capital budgets, I think, maybe only eighteen, I found this one to move extremely well, given the pressures that are always on with the capital budget and the varying viewpoints and and needs in the community, but I thought administration did a good job of assembling the information and putting it in front of us, and that the mayor handled the meeting in such a fashion that I think we got through things in good form, and that all members of council took it very seriously, and so let's hope the operating budget goes as smoothly. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Council Logan. Councilor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. November fourth, I attended on behalf of the mayor and council first best bar none awards in the city of Grand Prairie, they started in UK a few years back, and our community wanted to be involved in this off the atco, but the province wanted a couple of the main centers to do it, and it was Edmonton and Calgary started, and so this is our first year. Now, the five establishments that are in it, Manhatter's won the trophy, I guess you can say, for the best organized, but I'm just going to read two quick things about the best bar none awards. One is their focus on safety, just to receive accreditation, businesses have to show a strong commitment to public safety and customer service, and another for their public image, they have to show positive public image, reduce risk of alcohol-related incidents, potential for increased patents and profits, and improved employee morale, so they're trying overall to be a better business and to be stronger in the community, in which we've had people from A L C B board that were there, Councilor Adburn, Councilor Toronto were there, and as well, we had Superintendent Ray Noble there and other R C M P officers, so we really want this to work in the community, and as well, there's a lot of people that work with community safety and crime prevention, Karen, there's a lot of people who are involved in this, and they all deserve a pat on the back, because a stronger community, safer community is a stronger community. So as well, November seventh, I attended the Grand Prairie Special Olympics Committee News, basically, I guess they call it the fourth pillar they were looking for, M D Greenview, County Grand Prairie, City Grand Prairie, all put fifteen thousand dollars in, and now Palmroy, private business came in and put fifteen thousand dollars in, of course, it was stated that Rotary is putting in a lot, probably all combined when it's all said and done, so it's an achievement of everybody to come in together and make this successful, they're looking at about eight hundred athletes coming to our city in February, so, and I they've got really beautiful pins with the swan, and I'm wearing one, and I'm going to wear it till the event's over, and I think there's a lot of people very proud in our community about this happening. As well as Council Logan was speaking to about November eleventh, I was outside the Army Navy with a few other councillors and the mayor, I always think of my grandpa who's still alive, he's getting frail now, but he was over there in Italy, as well as many people out there with their family members that fought in wars. On November fifteenth, I also brought greetings on behalf of the mayor and council, Council Adburn was there, and we were at the Friendship Center for the Maytees Local Louis Real Celebration, and I thought it went very well, there was a couple jigs that happened, and actually, Council Adburn was up there doing a little bit of dancing too, which I got to watch, plus I brought my.
Where's the video?
Plus, I brought my children, Ken and Karen, there to be proud of their heritage. On November seventeenth, today, we attended the Maytee flag raising ceremony at City Hall, which I'm glad to attend to if I can every year, this was the fourth year, as Mayor Given said, that the we've put the flag up on the pole, and then afterwards, me and another councillor got kind of a real good honor, they basically gave us a red sash, which is a strong honor in the Maytee community, I was quite taken back to the vote of it, so I appreciate it, so that's everything.
Thanks very much, Council McLean. Council Adburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. November fourth, I brought greetings to the Mission Neighborhood Association Annual Meeting. I just want to recognize that particular association, they are kind of our model and are leaders with respect to the development of associations in Grand Prairie, so my kudos to that group, was able to speak with them for a bit, and then actually, we had a presentation from our staff with respect to a number of planning issues that we're working on in the city now, and so I think it was very informative. Then I then I joined Councillors McLean and Tarrant at the Best Bar None Accreditation Awards, Arc Gallea Grand Prairie Board Meeting the fifth, Member Six Grand Spirit Foundation Committee Meeting, a site attendance of annexation, seventh, the Special Olympics Media Conference, and then I had a Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association Nomination Committee Meeting. The eleventh, I attended the Senataf Year, the Anavet Remembrance Day Ceremonies, and attended both the Louis Real Luncheon on the fifteenth and the flag raising today. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Council Adburn. Council Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Given. A couple of events I attended on, sorry, on the fourth, the best bar none awards, it was great to see different businesses in town coming together and being part of this program. On the seventh, I was able to attend the Special Olympics announcement, it was great to see Palmroy come on board to support this great initiative in in the city, and on the thirteenth, I was able to attend the Jandel's Jandel Homes reception for the opening of the fill-a-house campaign, and so kudos to Big Country and to Jandel Homes for spearheading this initiative, and for, you know, helping those out this Christmas season.
Thanks very much, Council Tarrant. Council O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Pretty much, everything is what's been said, I've been at, sorry, I was attending at the Special Olympics News Conference, I also attended the Estate Financial Planning Week proclamation reading, Councilor Jackie Clayton actually gave the proclamation reading, it was quite interesting, there was about a hundred people in attendance, and the question was asked, how many people actually have a will at this present time, and about thirty-five people put their hand up that did not have a will, and I can just tell you that lawyers went over and talked to them right away, so, yeah. I did attend the Remembrance Day Parade outdoors at Senataf with some of my family members and council members, Maytee flag raising as well today, and the big part of last week was at Budget Liberations, and very interesting couple of days, thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Council O'Toole. Council Rice.
All right, I want to echo what Counselor Logan said, I've participated in many budget sessions, this one seemed to go particularly well, and I I give kudos to all of council, nobody got silly, nobody let their ego get the better of them at the waste of everybody else's time, and I think the mayor kept us on track remarkably well, so I think the session went very efficiently and very effectively, so kudos to council on that.
Thanks very much, Council Rice, and finally back to Council Thieson.
Thank you, Mayor Bill, it's been a very busy couple of weeks, but I did not attend very many events due to being in and out of town with the watershed, but I did happen to take in three sessions of annexation in the second week that it was going on, also on November seventh, I took part at the in the Second Annual Community Round Dance, and was able to give greetings on behalf of City Hall and City Council, so I was very honored to be a part of that event. Then on Tuesday, November eleventh, Councilor Jackie Clayton and myself were a part of the Legion Event for Remembrance Day at Revolution Place, I was honored to be able to drop the wreath on behalf of the city of Grand Prairie, and yeah, also honored to pay respects to the brave veterans that had gone to war for us in the past. What I wasn't aware of, though, is that it's not quite politically correct to stand up and clap on behalf of our veterans, I found that out on Facebook a couple of days later, I did see two ladies stand up in the bleachers, and so I joined them and started clapping, and it started the whole place standing up and everyone clapping, but yeah, I got some negative feedback from there, so I took accountability for that with my Facebook friends, said sorry for starting that, but I heard World War Two vets and having a grandfather who fought in World War Two, I thought, of course, I want to applaud his efforts for our freedom, and then, yeah, it came all the way back through budget, and then today, again, we were honored to be a part of the Maytee flag raising here at City Hall, I think the mayor did a great job, I think Angie Carrar, kudos to her, she is definitely a pillar in this community of goodwill and and definitely of the Maytee community, and then later on, I was also honored, I was that other councillor that Kevin McLean was alluding to, I got the red sash, and very proud, Louis Real has been a historical hero of mine since junior high school, and so I was very honored to get that, and that is all.
Are you showing us?
Oh, yeah, here, here, I'll even show you. Kev, you want to come over here to the camera? Look at that.
Very honored.
Talking about breaking the rap.
Sorry for the belly exposure there, but that is all.
Good to see you wearing your sashes here, and especially as we proclaim today Louis Realty in the city of Grand Prairie, so definitely very appropriate, thanks, guys. So I'll try to be relatively brief, on Thursday the sixth and Saturday the eighth, I hosted two Coffee with the Mayor sessions, so one at Laurel's Cafe downtown, and one at the Grand Prairie Public Library on the Saturday morning, had a great opportunity to share with residents and have some discussion about civic issues, and really appreciated the opportunity to do that, and those who came out, especially on the Saturday morning, which was after our first big dump of snow, a number of hardy residents managed to make it down to the library, and certainly look forward to continuing that, making it into a bit of a tradition. I attended on the twelfth, sorry, excuse me, of course, on the eleventh, I was also at Remembrance Day Ceremonies, participating in the outdoor ceremony at the Senataf, which I really appreciate doing, it's, I appreciate the fact that we have both opportunities for our community, the fact that those who might not otherwise be able to participate can participate at the indoor ceremony at Revolution Place, and those of us who maybe like their tradition, or maybe like to be reminded of the sacrifice that those who have served have made, have the opportunity to go to the Senataf, so I want to recognize both the Legion and the Army Navy Air Force veterans for organizing both of those events. On the twelfth, I was at the Salvation Army to make the ceremonial first donation to start off their kettle campaign, it was a pleasure to do that, and would encourage the community to support the kettle campaign when they see people out there ringing the bells. Of course, the budget discussions on Saturday the fifteenth was the Gala Festival of Trees kickoff, looks like a fantastic event again this year, as it always is, the twenty-sixth year of Festival of Trees, would encourage everyone to go out and check it out. On Sunday the sixteenth, I was at Q E two Hospital to make a proclamation for World Prematurity Day, it was a day to recognize babies that are born premature, and the challenges that they face, and the challenge that they their parents and families face, as well as the healthcare providers who help support them through that difficult time, and it was a great opportunity for me to learn more about the services that are provided here at the NICU at Q E two, and how that's progressed over time, actually, there were some nurses that were there since before this building was built, and they had nothing but good to say about doctors, the families, and of course, the families had nothing but good to say about service that they received there, so it was it was fantastic here. Of course, this morning, as so was mentioned, we had the opportunity to do the Maytee flag raising, want to again recognize Angie Carrar, she's obviously a force of nature, was what I was I was going to suggest, but it is an honor to be able to to do that and and provide that recognition of these people who've contributed so much to the development of our community over the years, and and give them a rightful place, I think, as as in recognition as an important part of our community, and also, we should recognize, as Angie mentioned to me today, she's the first Maytee woman to be given the Order of the Maytee Nation, so she had her special sashes bestowed upon her there today, and just fantastic that we have great community leaders that are on a national scale here in Grand Prairie, and it was a pleasure to welcome her here to City Hall. And with that, I have nothing else to report, and we'll call our meeting adjourned.